What divisions?
Ladies and gentlemen, Paul, 188, appoint the local inspector.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Building Commissioner Mark DePelle is here for an appointment.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Honorable Board. As you know, the building department's been down a couple of inspectors in the last two years. We've been searching. We've had a lot of candidates come through, but we just couldn't find somebody who was the right fit. Malcolm applied probably three weeks ago, came in for an interview with Human Resources, myself and Inspector Allen, and he had all the right answers. I don't know who coached him, but he had all the right answers. And we think he's going to be a good fit. And I respectfully request that he be appointed as a local inspector for the town of Burlington.
Thank you. And with Mark's recommendation, I wish to appoint Malcolm Farrell to the position of local building inspector in the town of Burlington and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period. So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved to second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, five, zero, zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Honorable Board. Okay. Sculpture Park, Siskiyou Center Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Marge McDonald, Council on Aging Director here. And I think if I'm not mistaken, the board will be hearing from Sculpture Park at a future meeting about relocating some of the pig sculptures. But Marge had reached out to me longer ago to request that the pig that was painted by the seniors up at the COA be relocated to the seniors' center on the seniors' set of grounds, so she can discuss about where they would like to place that.
Thank you, Paul. So what we are hoping to do is to place it sort of near the front door by the benches that are out there. So, you know, it's a kind of wayfinding spot for people. They get a little confused about which door to come in. So it'd be nice to be able to put the bright blue pig right by the door and say, "Look for the blue pig."
Okay. Any questions, Sarah?
Just, have you received any feedback against doing this from anybody?
No. And the art class is extremely excited to have the pig in a place of prominence.
Yeah, it's great. It's one of my favorite things on the campus.
Thank you. One of mine, too, but I'm not biased or anything.
So I'd be happy to see it there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was initially against the pigs when they first came out, but they kind of grew on me. And I have no problem with putting a pig in front of Council on Aging. It'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Chairman. Marge, is it going to be secured any further than just seated on the...
We'll find a way to secure it. I don't know, I'm thinking maybe concrete and down and bolted to that or something. We'll figure it out to make it so nobody can walk off with it.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's going to look great. I'm glad that everyone's excited about it.
Thank you.
That's why I make sure that, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's in my head. We need to find a way to secure it before we put it out there.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Who, the area, it's going to be, the sculpture's going to be, is that custodian maintained or rec department maintained?
There's nothing in there at the moment. I think it might be rec, but what I was thinking is we put the pig in there and then we put some flowers, you know, mums in the fall and, you know, try to spruce it up with, you know, as the seasons change.
I just wanted to make sure whoever, if it was an area that gets maintained by a town department, that that town department was in line with having exactly where you want it. But other than that, no issue.
Got it? Marge, just one quick question. Is that the only one you're going to be putting up there? Or will there be other ones?
I'm not 100% certain. And Barbara's got a, Barbara Larue has a plan in her head. I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Okay. All right. Okay. Need to vote on this, correct?
Yes.
So I'll take a motion at this point?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the placement of this particular pig at the entrance of the COA.
Poppy.
Second.
What?
Poppy.
Poppy.
Poppy the pig.
I would like to make an amendment to that, if it's possible. That's the only pig that's to be put up there? That's just my opinion. You don't have to accept that. You don't have to do anything with it. You can let it go.
Chairman, I think the board can discuss that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Sculpture Park folks come in to talk about ideas for placing the remaining pigs.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we'll stick with the original. Go ahead. There's been motion in the second, right?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, against, five, zero, zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. The art class will be thrilled.
Welcome home, Poppy.
Yeah, really.
Number 190, Diwali tree lighting ceremony. I mean, Town Common. I believe you're... Is anybody here for that? Hello? Anybody here for the Diwali tree lighting? My mic not working or did I actually get quiet?
It should be working.
Hello.
Good evening. How are you? If you could just introduce yourself and tell us what's going on.
So I'm a president of Indian American for Burlington. So we have our Diwali celebration on September 29th. And as every year, we also request to put a tree light on our Town Common during the actual celebration of Diwali. So, which is, we have requested for October 28th to November 4th.
Okay. Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the board has approved this for at least a couple of years now, where we've lit a tree.
That's right.
Several years in a row, at least.
That's right.
So it's something that we've done several years in a row. Hasn't it been any issue? We'll talk to the Recreation Department and get the lights and we'll make sure that that happens.
Okay.
Board approves it.
All right, we'll start at this end. Jim?
No issues, Mr. Chairman. We do it every year.
Yep. Mr. Brace?
Thanks, Chairman. I think last time we discussed this, I said barring any logistical issues, like Paul had mentioned, I'm perfectly okay with it, so nothing to me.
Michael?
No issues, Mr. Chairman.
Sarah?
I do just have a question. Can you just, is it October 20th or October 28th?
28th.
28th, because the information we have is the 20th.
The request was the 20th.
Okay. But you're saying 28th?
Yeah, 28th, November 4th.
November 4th.
Okay. That's fine. Maybe we can just say in the motion, the date is 28th, November 4th.
So every year we guys put three tree lights, tree on the, for the lights. Can we add some more trees for the lights?
So this is for the, are we talking about the Diwali festival?
Yeah, during the festival.
Yeah, so we have, we are talking about two things. One is the main Diwali lighting, which you have approved right now. But other than that, we have a festival which we celebrate on September 29th. So we, during those three days, we have asked Recreation to, you know, light up the three trees. So we wanted more so that in that way, like, you know...
It looks more festive.
More festivity, you know, for the, during the 29th. I think three days or something, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Paul, anything? Nothing else?
I have no issues, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So at this point, need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Diwali tree lights on the Town Common from October 28th to November 4th.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, against, five, zero, zero.
Thank you. And just want to invite you all for our Diwali celebration. You all have received an email from me inviting, so I hope you all are joining our event.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
191, new livery license. Is there anybody here for that? No? Anybody online for that? Nobody's here for the livery license? Nobody's here for that?
It doesn't, okay, actually.
Chairman, can we go back to that one?
Sure we can.
Melissa jumped online, so we can jump to her and then see if anybody from the livery shows up.
Okay. So we'll go to 192, proposal for pilot program. That would be Melissa, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Yes, and...
Okay. Oh, sorry, I didn't see. My bad. We can't hear you, Melissa.
Oh, can you hear me now?
There we are.
Yes. Great, okay. Well, good evening, members of the board and my colleagues. It's nice to see you guys from afar. I've been out for an emergency kind of with my family, but I'm here virtually just to give a quick update, follow-up for the micro gallery project. We were here about a month and a half ago. And joining me here in, physically actually, in the meeting is Catherine LaComte, who is a local artist and Burlington resident. So it seems like I may be having some technical difficulties, so I want to make sure that, you know, Catherine has a chance to introduce herself. The main reason I'm here is when we first proposed the micro gallery concept, some of the select board members had some questions, and we wanted to revisit that with you. A couple of the key things that were brought to our attention and questions were around location of a trailer and whether a trailer would be the most effective kind of model or vehicle to, kind of space to put it in. And we did do some additional research, and we're here tonight with, to kind of share a little bit more on that. So the micro gallery concept is really kind of a public art project that is intended for the town center. And it's intended to activate and create more creativity, engage in our kind of art and culture scene in Burlington. It's growing, it's there, but it hasn't had as much opportunity to be seen, especially because brick and mortar space for gallery is so expensive. This idea had been kind of stirring up in a variety of ways. And Catherine had come to my office by way of the Sculpture Park members, and we thought this could be a great way to create some of the placemaking efforts and programming that we've been trying to build on in the town center. So with that, the trailer itself is a concept that we'd like to continue moving forward with. I think there was an idea from our past meeting to maybe look at exploring a vehicle with an engine that can move on its own. But we did look into that, and in the proposal, we have some additional backup for you. Based on initial costs, maintenance, and flexibility, the trailer does seem like the optimal space to maintain this project in. The funding, again, is through a grant that we have for the town center, I mean, placemaking efforts. And also, I wanted to touch base on the location. We had one question on where it would be parked. The beauty of this is that even when it's not open, open to the public, the idea is that it would be parked and it could be viewed into. We talked to a property owner in the town center, Murray Hills. They're open to having it set up in...
I guess you're going to finish this for us.
Sure.
Just take a few minutes here.
We got Melissa back, so...
Melissa's it?
Yeah.
Melissa's the one right there, right?
No.
John looks like a weatherman.
Storm front moving.
Cold front coming in from the west. Just want to show you what it looks like. Adult model. Should be good. We're on a shot clock now. Try to get Melissa.
She's on mute, so...
Four years on. We still haven't figured all this stuff out yet.
The upgrade was supposed to make it so.
All right, Catherine. Do you want to start with your part of the presentation? And then I know Melissa will be ready to jump back on.
Sure. Yeah, I can do that. I'm not sure exactly what she wanted me to cover, but I can introduce myself. So my name's Catherine LaComte, and I've been a resident of Burlington for three years. I have a bachelor's in fine arts, acquired in 2014, and I recently finished my master's of fine arts last year in Boston. And so I came to Melissa with this project many months ago because, growing up, I grew up in a lower-class family, so I wasn't able to access museums or galleries because of the entrance fees. And I've had this idea for a long time about how to remove these institutional barriers and make art accessible for everyone. And so that's what we've been working on with this micro mobile gallery project.
Thank you. Melissa?
Thanks, Catherine. Sorry about... Yes.
Anything else? What would you like to add? Would you like to add anything where you got cut off?
I did get cut off. Thank you, Chairman Morandi. No, I just didn't think that... John cut me off.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just saying.
Doesn't surprise me. So, but Catherine, I'm glad Catherine was there to introduce herself. I think I wanted just to introduce another just point that we were trying to address from our last meeting was around the programming. And so what we put together is a memorandum of agreement with Catherine for the next year so that we could provide her a statement through the grant, and she will coordinate and help program this space over the next 12 months. And it will allow us to really kind of test what works and make sure that it's activated for the entire 12-month period, and then we'll reassess from that point.
Fantastic. Thank you. Questions? We'll start with Nick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Melissa, this, the grant will fund this in full?
Yes.
Okay. And then it will only remain on the Murray Hills property? Or will it move at all for events or anything like that?
It can move anytime we want to. We just wanted to make sure we had an agreement so that in the town center, closer to where their businesses are, we had agreement with the property owner. For town-owned spaces, whether it's around the common, we would come to the select board if we know in advance we wanted to set it up for a period of time. So I think that's how we have it set up. Anyone, we can park it anywhere, but we just want to make sure if it's a private property owner, we have their agreement.
Okay. Dare I, dare I ask liability of the space, should something happen to it?
Yeah.
We are liable for just about everything that happens in town or regarding our property. So, you know, we'll get it added on to our insurance coverage, to whatever extent insurance will cover, cover a loss in that situation. But, you know, it's not unusual. We are pretty much responsible and liable for just about everything we have here in town.
Okay. All right. I just, this has more moving parts to it than most things, right? Because we've got, now we've got the, on top of the trailer itself, we've got the property owner and whatever we're putting in it, right? As multiple parties that are involved. So I just want to make sure that, like, we're making sure all our bases are covered. I will say, Melissa, like, I know that the last time we talked about this, I was very waffly about the idea. I do think the idea has a lot of merits, and I'm looking forward to seeing how Catherine can program this and really bring this to life for everybody. I'm not going to say on the way of a good idea. I want to see it, you know? I'm glad the grant dollars can cover it, and I hope that it's successful, like everything else that we do, right? We try, we make the investment, we see if it works. If not, then we're going to make a fast pivot to the next thing. We've got 12 months to see if this thing really shakes loose. So if there's anything else that I can do, you know, to help make this successful, please let me know. You've got my support, as always. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a great idea. I do have a little concern about as far as it being located in the center permanently or all the time, because it's out there and that area's a lot of transient activity, a lot of bicycles, kids on bikes. I'm a little concerned that it might get vandalized, or at least somebody might do something to it. So I just hope that the area's going to be well-lit, maybe some sort of alarm or motion sensors on it. And then if it does, if we do find out that it's become a target, so to speak, we have some sort of contingency plan or somewhere to put it if we see that leaving it in the town center becomes an issue.
Thank you, Chairman Tigas. Chairman Morandi, do you want me to respond to that?
Absolutely.
I'm just, I think we have had concern around that when we started the Pocket Park as well. And with regard to kind of the furniture or the mural, I mean, I guess the mural's relatively new, but we have not had that to date. So at least for some precedent, some indication, people have been respectful of kind of these interventions in the town center. But we will, you know, kind of take that into consideration around lighting and placement.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I love this idea. Just sort of piggybacking on Jim's concern, I understand that when it's closed, you'll still be able to see inside it. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then are there times where it's going to be open for people to go in? And are there going to be hours? Or how is that going to work? And who's going to manage that?
Yep. Catherine, actually, if you don't mind to take that question?
Sure. I've never been to one of these meetings. Sorry, do I call you chairwoman?
Sarah.
Sarah, okay, sorry. So, yeah, Melissa and I have spoken about doing a community event at least once a month, so there is a schedule of programming in a document that we have. I don't know if you have access to it. So it'll be open for the community event, and then we were going to spend some time to really sort of sit down and find, like, what times we could open it and when. But it would be announced beforehand. I do plan on, excuse me, creating an Instagram account for it and sort of promoting it and marketing it through that platform. And then I would be posting, like, when it was open there. It's more of like a pop-up experience, like, we're here this time today, you can come in and walk in. But the main point of this space is to have these once-a-month community events, but also that the art be free and accessible 24/7 so that there is no barrier to entry or to viewing any portion of this experience.
Great, thank you. And I definitely appreciate that framing of removing barriers to art, especially. I feel like we're making strides in that with Sculpture Park.
Yeah.
And our local library has featured artists every once in a while. You can go in and see that. So just add on to that, and I am in support. Thank you, Melissa, for all your work on this, and Catherine for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I love the idea when Melissa brought it to us a month and a half ago. I love it even more now that I hear the background and the story of your growing up and removing barriers to art. I think that is awesome and wonderful. And that we saw with the pigs on the common that there is a need for, like, the younger people. The kids love the art and they love accessibility to art. So this is just a slam dunk, I think, in removing accessibility to art. Makes it even a cooler project, in my mind. My question for you is, have we seen, like, where'd you get the idea from? Have you seen it in other communities that you can kind of work with them and see what works, and you already kind of have a head start to the programming or the use? Or is this going to be a first of its kind? Did you have a background on any of that?
Yes. So I had actually seen a mobile space, an enclosed, very large-scale van by San Francisco Museum of Art, and it was open, only open at certain times, and there was no window, so it wasn't viewable from the outside. But they would go to local communities around San Francisco and open the doors and have an experience, like a VR session or like a video showing inside. And I thought that that was a great idea. However, there is still a barrier there to seeing the art because someone had to be present and had to be open. So then someone I know, Catherine Sullivan, bought this sort of small-scale real estate pop-up office. It's about four feet wide by six feet high, I believe. And it's a window, and there's probably three pieces of art that fit into it. It's located in West Concord, and she shows art through that. And that's accessible 24/7 because it's viewable from the window. So then I sort of combined these two things, like, how can I make it viewable, make it portable, make it accessible without needing anyone to be present to operate it? So all of those things sort of came together, and I had, I wanted to implement it while I was in graduate school, but then I became pregnant with my son, who's now a year old. So now I feel like this is the right time to start, you know, making this happen.
Very cool. And will it just be open to local artists? Or will you be out soliciting artists all around the country to come to Burlington and show their art? What are you thinking for content and programming?
Yeah, I think it would be great to expand the network beyond Burlington, beyond Massachusetts, and to get other artists involved and more people coming to Burlington. And for the beginning stages, the artists I've reached out to are people I know and I've worked with in Boston, who are mostly Boston, Massachusetts-based people, who will do the programming and the workshops and show their art. So I think maybe for the first half of the year, I could start locally and showcase who we have in Massachusetts, and then expand beyond there and get more people to come in on a more nationwide basis.
Yeah, I mean, to start, the local artists, we have a lot of talented people in this town.
Yes.
Photographers, crafts, artists, so be a great place to start. But, I mean, expanding it as you go would be great. Couple of questions for Melissa. So Melissa, where's it going to be stored when we're not using it? Behind Town Hall here?
Well, the idea is it's 24/7, so it will have something to look at at all times. And so it will ideally be parked either. That's why we wanted to make sure we had permission from a property owner for an extended amount of time. Ideally, I mean, there would only be transition points when there's a changeover in the exhibit or, you know, a rehauling or cleaning or anything like that. But the idea would be placed somewhere that people can see, and it would bring in additional foot. And know where it's located, whether that's, you know, maybe right by True North, whether it's on the Town Common, or if there's other interested property owners, we could move it. You know, I think the other benefit of this, the art piece is important, but the location is important because that's what we're trying to do. And why it's kind of coming out of the Economic Development Office is the intersection between art, public art, and economic development around the creative economy, around creating kind of an energy and an excitement with bringing art, bringing creativity, that then stimulates not just foot traffic but interest, and it ties in with kind of that knowledge-based economy that kind of flourishes in, you know, creative communities. So this is kind of all feeding into that ethos.
Another question is, if you have any money? How much money do you have in the grant left in case Catherine were to find, you know, some cool art exhibit that she wanted to bring in, but they had a fee? Would we have money to cover that?
We have a small budget that was included in the proposal, but at this point, we'd probably review it in more detail before we would commit to paying someone. Catherine and I had talked a lot about the different artists generally are excited about sharing their art. about sharing their art, um, and not always looking to, you know, for seeking a commission to present it necessarily.
Okay. And lastly, it's something Nick brought up in the last time meeting and I just wanted to, to see if we had it buttoned up. Um, who's going to be moving the, the trailer around? Is that going to be DPW or how are we going to handle that?
Yes, DPW said they could do it. If, um, buy it by a standard truck that they have, I guess. They have a, these, these, um, trailers are actually pretty common, um, because they're so versatile. We actually had one in the town center parking lot as they were doing some construction. Um, and they're pretty, they're pretty, you know, wide and easy to move.
Awesome. Well, I think it's a great project and a great proposal and I wish you the best of luck. I'm in full support. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Um, everything's been said. I don't have to say a word. Everyone's talked about everything that are positives. There's no negatives with this at all. I think that, uh, the funding is there. I think that's going to be great. Um, there's a bunch of places that during the course of the year that it can go to, uh, whether it's Burlington's Night Out or different spots that we have in town. So I don't see a negative behind this at all. I think it's great. Uh, there's an artist here in Burlington that does all the renderings for Harvard University when the presidents are there in their suits and ties. And, you know, maybe she'd want to get involved in this a little bit. Uh, she's, you know, went to Italy and studied over there and all that kind of stuff. So with his luck, like Mike had said, there's a lot more people in this town than we realize, uh, that do different things. So, uh, I'm definitely in favor of this. I just need a, uh, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the aisle program, uh, for public art and culture project, uh, as presented.
Second.
Motion made a seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
That smile's worth it.
Thank you everyone.
Look how happy she is right now.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, I still see nobody here for the, uh, delivery license. So do you want to go right to, well, the public hearing is continued, correct?
He emailed me. He can't find his way in. So I just gave him my cell number and told him to text me if he's still in the area and I'll go down and get him. So.
Okay.
Move.
All right. So we're going to move to, uh, the grant of location for 33 Chestnut Ave has been, um...
There's a request to, uh, postpone that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, continue to, uh, our October meeting. Lynn?
Day seven.
October 7th?
October 7th, on or after 6 o'clock.
Okay. So we'll move along then. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, citizens' time?
Joe, we gotta vote that.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I thought.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
To postpone the grant of location for 33 Chestnut Ave.
Continue.
Continue the grant of location for 33 Chestnut Ave to the October 7th meeting on or after 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, motion is made a seconded to, uh, continue. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on to...
Yes.
I just give you a heads up that the renewal for, for our WebEx package is in place. So this meeting was set up during that, so it only has a maximum of 40 minutes. So we really need to restart at 6:55 again, go through that process again. As you can see, it takes two minutes at least to nail it like immediately. But I did put it on the chat too, so anybody that's online will know.
Okay.
At about 6:55, we'll be doing the same.
We do enjoy the process.
Yeah.
Would you, would, would, so it's almost that time now? Would, uh...
20 minutes.
What's that?
20 minutes.
Oh.
We're going to have to do it every 40 minutes, so we should wait till if there's an opportune time and as close to 6:55.
Okay. Let me know when that time is and I will make you happy, okay? All right, so now we move on to citizens' time now? We all set for that?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there anybody in the room that would like to speak at citizens' time? Okay, we got two members. Okay. If you just come up here, state your name and tell us what's going on and go from there.
Good evening, a very one, for the record, Jeff DeBona, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. So I'm here to speak about some issues that residents have been having with the building inspectors. As a town meeting member, I was voted in to be a voice for resident concerns and I've received many complaints from residents about how they've been treated and jerked around by inspectors, but I wasn't able to bring it to a public forum out of respect for their privacy and their own fears of retaliation, so I will not discuss their issues. I'm very familiar with the zoning bylaws because of my work with the town, so, and many residents aren't, so they come to me for help when they're put in this situation. However, I'm here today because it has now happened to me personally. I recently went to pull a permit for a kitchen remodel on my own property and was met with pushback about the amount that was stated that the work would cost. I'm doing this for a family member on a fixed income that I own, co-own the property with, and I'm doing the work myself, which is a homeowner I have the right to. I already have many of the materials needed to do the work, which I've collected through the years in anticipation of this project coming forward. I'm not making a chef's award wooden kitchen, but a simple functional kitchen. I estimated that the work would cost $5,000 and paid the $66 permit fee for it. Today I was met with, I can't give out a permit for less than $20,000, $5,000 is too low. I explained that that's what the work is costing me and Burlington doesn't have a fee schedule based on the square footage of the work being done and it only asked for a cost. I got nowhere with my statement and I was basically extorted for another request of $200 in permit fees. I asked the board to look into this matter and find out why residents are being scrutinized so much by inspectors. Thank you.
All right. Um, we don't, we don't get into discussions on citizens' time as you, as you know, so Mr. Sagorino, you have that information. Uh, could you please look into that and we'll figure out what the inspector is doing over there, uh, and we'll go from there.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hello. For the record, Bob Young, Three Valley Circle. I have a brief question first. Uh, will I be able to speak when you bring up Verizon, I think, right after citizens' time?
Well, Verizon's not coming on our schedule tonight.
Well, there's something that was continued. Did that, was that taken off?
Yeah.
Okay.
October 7th.
Being October. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was being picked up, uh, for this meeting. My, my, my mistake. Uh, so I'll go on to the main reason why I'm here. Uh, I'm here for a very serious matter. Whenever I'm here, I am for a serious matter, no matter what it is. But I'm very concerned about the talk in this body and others around town about taking citizens' rights to vote away from them. And I'm talking about the town clerk. I think there's been a big rush. Uh, I attended, and I don't know if there were four or five meetings, but I attended uh, at least three of them. And I'd have to say, uh, to my fellow citizens, to anybody on Buzz that's going to hear this or anybody that hears it from somebody else, no one in this town that's an elected official is giving up any of their power, but they want to take it from us. And there's a lot of weak excuses about why we're where we are. And I am the first one to say Amy does a great job, but this isn't right. It isn't right. They spent 99% of the time talking about, uh, going to a appointed town clerk. Very weak, very little on, uh, actually talking about the value of having a town clerk. And there are many. And I've done some additional research very quickly. I'm not even going to get into it tonight, but, uh, if I was a betting man, I would say this is going to be another one of your 5-0 votes. And I think it's too bad. I really do. And I hope the town wakes up and pushes back. And so the real fight's going to be a town meeting, so bring it on. And I hope the people really push back because we shouldn't be giving up this, right? This should be an aggressive program and that's my final point. I looked on the Mass Municipal Association website today and I looked on the Town Clerks Association of Massachusetts. We are not represented there trying to advertise for a town clerk. I don't know how long that's been going on, but it's not there today. And as far as that goes and expand it, we should be looking for a town, assistant town clerk that actually wants to be a town clerk. So I read in the Burlington Union about Mr. Sagorino. He was here for a very long time. So there was no bench over in the town clerk's office, but he was able to, uh, learn a lot while he was here and then he was promoted into the job that he's in. So, uh, I'm passionate about it and this isn't the last time I'm going to speak on it. And, uh, I hope you take it as serious as I do, but I have no good feeling about the fact that this isn't going to be anything but a 5-0 vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room for citizens' time? Anybody online? For citizens' time? Nobody? Okay. We're going to move on to, uh, town clerk warrant articles. Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That one, I'd like to turn it over to Select Board Member Carly. Um, she, as you know, uh, spearheaded that committee.
Yep.
And I think that the committee came up with a recommendation, uh, for the board in the town meeting.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Paul, and for the chair.
Yep.
So, um, before I get into the final recommendation of the board, I did just want to give some background, why we're here. Um, I don't think any of this is going to be new or surprising to any of you, but for the sake of this public meeting, I do want to let everybody know. Um, so Amy is set to retire in, uh, 2025. Uh, there are no obvious successors in the clerk's office at this time and Amy has also taken upon herself to do some outreach to find somebody within the community and has had no luck. Um, the role of town clerk has evolved quite a bit over the years. It's become much more complex. Um, and there is a trend across our state and others to make this role appointed because of that. Also Burlington has grown and evolved and our makeup and continued development make it a particularly challenging town in which to be a town clerk. So in light of all that, Amy did come to us, uh, last year, I think, uh, for some, some time within the last several months, um, you know, to sort of consider this, think about it. Um, we went to town meeting in May and, um, you know, just to gauge their, uh, you know, their thoughts, what they thought about it. Um, and one of the suggestions there was to create a committee and, um, explore, uh, the, the process and the pros and cons of going to, to an appointed town clerk, um, from an elected. So we, as a board, created this committee to help determine the pros and cons of an appointed town clerk versus elected and to, in form, in form and assist the board in making a recommendation to town meeting. We did meet four times, two times in July, two times in August. Um, and I do, do want to take the time to thank those of, those who volunteered to be part of this committee. It was, um, four town meeting members, David Alper, Florence Leon, Jake, Jack, uh, Jack Kelly, Chris Murphy, and, uh, one poll worker, Elliot Chakovsky, uh, and then myself and Joe Mirandi, uh, as a, a select board representation. So I just want to thank everybody who was on that committee. Um, there were varying opinions on the, on the committee. It wasn't all one, one side or the other, so it made for very good and productive conversations. Um, in that time, we heard from Amy Warfield, uh, we also heard from Joanne Faust in HR regarding job descriptions and recruiting plans. And, um, and then we also heard from the Town Clerk of Arlington, which was very interesting. Um, Arlington recently voted on this issue. Um, and prior to that vote, they actually hired the Collins Institute to conduct a study on this. So we were able to view those materials, uh, very interesting information. There was a lot of stuff that was specific to Arlington, but, um, a lot of it was just about the role of town clerk in, in general, so it was very useful to view that. Um, we did focus a lot of our time ironing out the pros and cons of elected versus appointed. Uh, we really went through every single bullet point, just making sure it was accurate and clear. And, um, those are included, uh, Lynn printed them off, so they're in there. They weren't in our original backup, but, um, they're in your packet tonight. And those are also available for the public to view. Um, and they'll be available at town meeting, um, if we decide to push it forward. Um, so just as a summary, I'm not going to go through every one of the pros and cons, but, uh, the, on the elected side, the pros reviewed as it's accountable, accountable directly to the voters, they're a resident of the community and familiar with it, and they're independent from the select board and town administration. The cons on that, on the elected side, were seen as, um, the only requirement is that they're a registered resident. There's no requirements around working hours, qualifications, knowledge of the role. Um, voters are not in a position to supervise or evaluate job performance and there's no ability to remove the person outside of their, the election cycle. And last, uh, there would be a risk that no candidate would choose to run. There's, um, you know, campaigning involved and that can be a deterrent, a deterrent for qualified candidates, uh, which would leave the position vacant. On the appointed side, some of the pros were seen as, um, opening it up to those outside of Burlington, uh, creates a larger pool of applicants that can be vetted and experienced. We could include specific job requirements in a job description. There's better opportunity for evaluation, accountability and succession planning and there is an ability to remove for lack of performance. And on the cons for the appointed side, there is a potential lack of impartiality or independence from the appointing authority. If from outside of Burlington, they may need to learn their history and culture and the way we work and also that voters would feel less connected to the process. So given all of this and the research we did, um, within the committee, the recommendation of the committee was that the question of whether to, to transition the role of town clerk from an elected to an appointed position be put on a town-wide ballot at a future election for the voters to decide. There was some, just for full transparency about what we talked about, there was some back and forth about whether we should make a stronger recommendation as a committee to, you know, either support elected or appointed either way. But ultimately, when going back to the role of this committee, it was more to gather the information for the select board and to make a recommendation as to whether the voters should, should decide. On that note, you know, the town meeting members who were, who participated did say that they would gladly share their opinion on it and went, if asked, and, uh, at town meeting. So I think that sums it up. Does anybody have any questions or...
Comment? That's okay? Yes, it is. Um, I sat on the committee. I did miss the last meeting. Um, but I want to say this, Sarah did a great job. You were in the meeting very efficiently. Everybody was on point. Uh, you took everything into consideration. Your paperwork was incredible with this whole thing. Um, I agree with the vote that it should go down to town meeting. Uh, I just want to say thank you for taking the lead role on that and you did a absolutely fantastic job with that. So, that being said, Jimmy?
I just wanted, again, acknowledge what Sarah did, but that's the way we work. If we've got something, a position to fill, a question, we form a committee and make recommendations. I think this is a great, a great idea and I think it's a great recommendation. So, again, great job, Sarah.
Nick?
Uh, yeah, you know, I think, I think back to, you know, when we went through the similar process for the treasurer task collective, right? I think that we had a lot of voices on both sides, um, you know, with, with similar concerns to what Mr. Young was saying a moment ago during citizens' time, right? Uh, a balance of power, you know, independence, control, um, you know, and, but Sarah, you know, I, I think you and this subcommittee made a lot of really great points, uh, you know, with the pros and cons of just the environment and the, the way the world evolved you know, we have problems all the time just with getting on WebEx, right? Like, we want to make sure that our staff are fully supported and not totally adherent on, you know, elected officials. And I think that it's only fair to let the town decide which way they want this to go. So I guess my question is, should Town Meeting say, "Yeah, let's go ahead and put some ballot, let folks decide," do people still have the opportunity to run for town clerk, or is the way Amy's retirement landing and the way her term is up, is that like we, like, how is it all going to land?
That's a great question, Nick. And Amy and I actually had a conversation about this towards the end of last week, and I think there's a couple of options there. Because I think Amy's term goes further than 25.
Okay.
So we'll be able to have some decisions as to whether or not, how far Amy wants to go in her term, into her term, whether we should appoint temporary various, we'll have various options that she wants to discuss and vet out further.
Okay.
But as of right now, I think the way it worked under the treasurer-tax collector one was that the treasurer stayed in to finish his term, and at that point, this board did appoint the treasurer for an additional period of time.
Right.
After that, as the appointed treasurer-tax collector as well.
Right.
But without knowing Amy's exact retirement date, it would be difficult to answer that question, but she is thinking about it, and, you know, I think we'll have some options for the town to pursue. And it looks like we're getting a little bit closer to 6:55, so I don't know if we want to have a clean cut and then come back to this.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say before we get booted and we log in, that I vaguely remember Amy talking about, you know, her timing, her retirement, so that we had the opportunity to have these discussions and make a decision. So it's nice that we can let the town kind of decide what they want to do, elected or appointed, and then we'll have a little bit of time to kind of figure out what that looks like going forward, whether it be appointed, or folks can hear it for an election.
Okay. Why don't we take a quick break and let Mr. Denizio do his thing, and then we come right back to this?
Do you want to shut up? Are you sad, or you want?
We didn't shut up.
No, that's all.
Oh, so we've got to wait patiently?
Just have to keep going until it stops.
This is, this is a fun addition to the meeting. This is nice.
We have another three minutes.
So we can, so we have three minutes to take a vote on this, if you'd like to. Mike, have any you'd like to add to this?
I also want to echo the thanks to the committee for all the work you guys did in Grouse in looking at the, the issue. And I love the recommendation of putting it to a town vote. I think it should be up to the town to decide what we do. I go back and forth on it, and it's a difficult one. And I think asking the town to decide is probably the best road to go.
So it's on here as a discussion. Can we still take a vote on it tonight, or I always get leered about how we post it versus what?
It's a discussion.
The idea was that this is a discussion. You can vote it, an article in item 197.
Thank you.
And that's all I had, Mr. Chairman, on that.
Okay. You want to take a vote on this, right?
Chairman, we can take it under item number 197 when we go through all the warrant articles.
Okay, all right.
List of this portion of the agenda as a discussion only. Sarah, update the board on, on the committee's activities, and then we can take a vote on it under Agenda Item Number 197. A little bit down, a little bit further down.
Okay, great. Okay. John, what do we got?
We've got a minute and forty-five.
Would anyone like to do a song and dance?
Yeah.
Okay. I will say this, that Sarah, you did have a lot of paperwork, which was great for us. There was a lot of stuff. It was, it was good. It was really, really good.
I'm a fan of paperwork.
What's that?
I'm a fan of, like, writing everything down.
Well, you know what? You're, you're, you're brand new to me on the board, and I'm starting to realize this, that you do take a lot of notes, and you do have a lot of paperwork, which I think is great. You know what I mean? I think it's really, really good. So, and the meetings couldn't have gone any smoother. I can say that right now. What else can I talk about for the next 37 seconds?
Do we have enough time to take minutes out of order and just get that down off there?
I don't think we have enough time.
No.
Do we have enough time before that shuts off?
I don't understand what the world is doing there.
During, during minutes.
Doesn't it usually give you a five-minute warning?
We got the thing.
Oh, we got it.
Yeah. All right. So we'll do this, if we can do it quickly, 199 minutes. Any comments, questions on it? If you'd like to make someone make a motion on the two dates?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve our regular meeting from 6:10, 6:24, and 7:15, as provided the backup.
Second.
Motion made a seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, goodbye.
All right. Beautiful. Perfect timing.
I'm just waiting until you watch it.
I didn't check out. I'm going to want to do that vote when we go back.
We'll do that vote when we come back?
You're still live.
Yeah, isn't, isn't BeCats still on? BeCats still out?
Mine is.
WebEx lost us, but BeCats got us.